Hey there folks, Gene Galloway with the Chatham Journal. I'm here with Jessica Winger. She's one of the candidates for District 3 of the Chatham County School Board. She's a challenger and I'm luckily having an opportunity here to have a little conversation as to, Jessica, why are you running?
Hi Gene, thanks for talking to me today. I am running because for two years I've attended school board meetings and tried to advocate for families, for our children, and seeing parent voices being pushed aside, ignored, and I think that we need to have a strong partnership between our parents and our families. I feel that parents need to be heard. So, I'm running because I want to give parents a voice. I'm running because I want to support teachers. I'm also a substitute teacher and have seen firsthand in the classroom, you know, how our kids are doing, how our teachers are doing, heard from teachers who are overworked and stressed and not getting the support that they need. So, those are my two big focuses of the campaign and why and what really drove me to run.
Right, well, we tackled the big question right off the bat so folks can get a good idea, but tell us a little bit about yourself, Jessica Winger, your family, your kids, because you do have kids going through the school system.
Yes, yes, I have four children, ages nine up to 14. They're in elementary, middle school, and high school here in Chatham County. I've always been an involved parent, you know, I'm primarily a stay-at-home mom and so I've been involved in helping out in the classroom, you know, like a lot of parents do. And it really wasn't until the last couple of years that I saw the need to be more involved. But, you know, my kids are, they love school. And, you know, two years ago when they were sent home and I saw that light dying in them and saw, you know, the virtual learning that was just a disaster for us and so many kids in our community, and saw that educating our children wasn't a priority. It, I had big concerns and I wanted answers and wanted to understand, you know, why those decisions were being made. Since then, you know, we've had a lot that's happened in the last couple of years and my kids have thankfully, you know, thrived and done great in school and I want to keep them in public school and I think there's a lot of good that can come, that is coming from our schools. But I also think we need to have a balance of when things aren't going right, it needs to be addressed and it shouldn't be swept under the rug or labeled an isolated incident. You know, we need to be, we need to be looking at the whole picture here so that there's a true representation of what's happening in our schools. But again, you know, I'm really, I'm really here running to support our families, support our students, and support our teachers.
So you mentioned you felt to be, you got involved and you started going to school board meetings two years ago.
Yes.
And you're driven by the concern that you saw. At what point, that was after the first year of distance learning or where in the process did that kick in?
Yeah, so, so originally when everybody went home, was sent home from school, we finished off that school year at home and then it was that fall, so fall of 2020 is when it kept being pushed off when our kids were to go back. It was six weeks and then it was nine weeks and meanwhile, parents and kids were just drowning at home going, this is not working, this isn't working, trying to reach out to teachers, teachers' hands were tied, there was only so much they could do. They were frustrated. Principals, their hands were tied, you know, and I saw, I then saw that it was at the board level, that I needed to go, you know, to the board to find out what was going on and, and I went to my first meeting and, because I hadn't regularly attended board meetings in the past, and went to that meeting and was very surprised and shocked at the lack of discussion and that there wasn't, there didn't seem to be a discussion of how these decisions were actually impacting our kids and what was happening in the home. There was this disconnect. And I continued to go to these meetings and I tried to offer a parent perspective of, hey, this is, this is what's happening. I spoke many, many times in public comments, trying to offer that parent perspective and even offer solutions or, or alternatives or saying, hey, let's make a plan, we need to be making a plan, and, and felt as though, as a parent, we were ignored. I mean, that, that's really, you know, it's blunt to say that, but that's, that's truly how I felt, other parents felt, you know, to hear a presentation about virtual learning and all these apps and all these programs that they were using and it looks and it sounds amazing on paper, but then to actually go, you know, into the homes of families and talk to parents and, and talk to kids and see, this is not working. You know, we had honorable students who were failing. We had children who were, who should have been learning to read and they were struggling to stay on a Zoom. So, that was just so drastic and at that point and I continued to advocate, even once, even once they started to phase kids back in to school, I still continued to go to school meetings because just because my kids ended up back in the classroom, you know, we still had high schoolers who weren't, we had, you know, high school seniors who were trying to finish out their senior year and they, they weren't able to go back and have that senior year that they had been looking forward to. There were so many things that we lost and I continued to hear, you know, I went to these meetings and then I'd go home and I'd talk to friends, I'd talk to acquaintances, I'd, I'd talk to people and hear the same thing, you know, and they would say, oh, what's going on, what's going on, you know, they didn't have the time to go to those meetings. So I felt as, when I was going, it wasn't just for myself, it was for others, it was for others in our community, you know, I heard how they were struggling, I heard how families were, were struggling to cope and to me, it was a very serious issue, you know, and so seeing that disconnect at the board level was, was very troubling to me. Even once by the end of that school year, you know, all the kids were back in school, again, I still continued to attend, I was curious, I, I wanted to understand more. There had been a lot that I had seen in these meetings and I just had that desire to, to understand and, and, and truly grasp, you know, what was happening at the board level. And that's when I began to see more and more, lack of discussion and decided, you know, eventually decided, do you know what, we need to change, we need to have a parent perspective on the board, we need to have open and honest discussion about what's happening in our schools, what's happening in our community, what's happening in the families of the children that our schools are teaching.
So you're, you're saying schools as being a total part of the community. Some people refer to it as a pathway to success in the future and you're saying that, what is one, maybe one or two suggestions that you made when you did, when you spoke in the public hearing as to, hey, maybe the school board should look at doing this and, and they didn't seem to even pay any attention to it?
Yeah, let me, let me think back. So, a couple of times I made suggestions of, you know, at least presenting a plan for how we were going to get kids back into school, because that, that seemed to be what was troubling is, at that point, there was this, well, are we going to go back, when are we going to go back, I don't know, I don't know, and, and we even had medical professionals who were trying to give, give input, but there was, there wasn't a laid-out plan, there wasn't a, okay, well, if we, if we, if we work to get them in at this point, then, then where are we going to go next, how are we going to continue on? As far as any other examples of, of suggestions that I made when we were dealing, dealing with the strong COVID measures, kids were all back in school, but we were continuing to see issues with the strong COVID policies that they have with regards to how long kids needed to stay out of school, the quarantining, testing, you know, and, and so I brought the, brought it up saying, we need to have, we need to have a form, we need to have something, some way to inform parents about this. What is the clear policy right now and what is your plan to move past this policy? Because it wasn't something that was sustainable, it was keeping kids out of school for too long. There were, we saw other districts who were changing and doing other things, but yet we continued to stay in that holding pattern and there wasn't any plan to move past it. And so parents were going, well, when are we going to, when are we going to move on from it? When are we going to, you know, phase out of this? Because I recognized the, the ability that we needed to be safe and, and make sure we were doing this in a timely manner, not rushed, but when there was no plan given, you know, parents, it was just left so open-ended, you know, for us as parents.
You mentioned being a parent, you've got four kids in the school system. It sounds like, just from living life here in Chatham County, you're not just attending meetings, but you're talking to other parents or other moms. There, if I'm not mistaken, let's see, David's not a, well, he's a grandparent. Would you be the only parent coming on, you're the only parent running for a position this year, aren't you?
Yes, only, only parent with kids in the school running. As of right now, the new board member, Julie, I'm going to say her last name wrong, I apologize, Julie Breidenstein. She does have two children in the school and she was newly selected to be on the board, just as Melissa Lavick had, also had a couple of children in the schools, but, but nobody else on the board has children currently in the schools, which, you know, we don't need every board member to have that, but, but having a connection to the schools and being present, being involved with the families in the community, being involved with the schools, going and visiting the schools on a regular basis and actually seeing what's going on, talking to teachers, talking to staff, having that interaction with them, I think is so important and that's something I really want to bring to being a board member is a continuous and constant interaction with parents, with our schools, with our staff, so that they feel, hey, this is somebody I can talk to and this is somebody that does represent us and represent our community and our parents.
You volunteer at school, but did you also substitute teach?
Yes, so I started substitute teaching last school year when there was really kind of this cry of help, you know, I, I said, yeah, I, I can do that, I can sub, and it was really eye-opening, really eye-opening experience. It was a lot of fun as well, but very draining. I really felt like I was able to step in the shoes of our teachers and see what they are experiencing and I had teachers who opened up to me about what they were experiencing in the classroom and, and what they were dealing with on a day-to-day basis with kids. It was really an opportunity to see and hear from teachers, you know, that's, that's what, as much as I was helping the students and trying to support, I saw the need to, to really sit down and listen to teachers and hear what they need, hear what they specifically need, because sometimes we have an idea, even as parents, we have an idea of, you know, oh, we think this is what parent, what teachers need, but that's not actually what they need. Same with our administrators and board, sometimes they can think they know what the teachers need, but it's not actually what the teachers need. We need to be talking to the teachers and being there in the schools and in the classrooms with them.
You mentioned as a substitute teacher, it's kind of eye-opening. What were some of the eye-opening things about being a substitute teacher and being kind of in, in the trenches? People will say, hey, a substitute teacher isn't all the way in the trenches, but you're probably closer to it than a lot of parents are.
Yeah, being, showing up in the morning and being handed a lesson plan through the day and having no support staff throughout the day. I mean, I was shocked that in an entire day, I'm with the kid, I was with the kids, the whole day, no bathroom breaks, it was, you know, not every day had no bathroom breaks thankfully, but, but there were days that were, that were like that, where it was just constant, non-stop, there wasn't this time to breathe. I think I was also surprised at the discipline issues that, that were happening and, and a lot of that has to do with kids being out of school for so long, you know, learning to be in school, learning, learning what it means to listen, to interact, to work collaboratively with your classmates, to compromise. Our kids learn so much at school, not just in reading and writing and math and science, but they learn social skills and they learn how to interact, they learn about human emotion, they learn about, you know, the world around them. And so, it's important that, that we as teachers or our teachers can address that, but while also still making sure they focus on, on those core academics and creating that love of learning in our kids.
You, we, we talked a little bit before we started this discussion, you had four issues that you see of most importance to you and while we touch on supporting teachers because this kind of leads into it, you know, sometimes people hear, yeah, parents this and parents that, but you're not saying it's, parents, it's, it's collaboration with the teachers or, or what's your plan for improving the support for teachers within Chatham County schools?
Yes, collaboration, that is, that's my key word, because teachers are doing the bulk of that work during the day, but they need to be, but a child needs to be supported at home, needs to be sort of supported outside of the classroom and teachers need to feel, or I shouldn't generalize about them, but, but teachers and parents both want to work together for that same goal of kids. And so, if, if a child can be supported in the classroom and at home, that's going to lead to the greatest opportunities for success for that child. And actually, that is something that, you know, has been studied and found to be supportive of kids that are, that are struggling in, gosh, jogging my brain this morning, in, in low-income areas, when, when you're able to get the community involved and you're able to support the child, not just in the classroom but at home, that lifts them, that lifts them and helps them. So in supporting teachers, it's not just, you know, a lot of times we talk about supporting teachers, we talk about, you know, staff pay and I absolutely do believe our teachers are underpaid and that is something important that, that needs to be addressed and advocated for. A lot of that is advocating the state and advocating our, going to our county commissioners to pay our teachers more, but that's not it, it's not just about the money. Our teachers are lacking in substitute teachers, our teachers, they're lacking instructional assistance, they're lacking in supplies to their classroom. These are all things that add to their day-to-day, I mean, the, the daily grind that they experience, you know, if they can feel supported on all those sides and areas, then it's going to create that stronger classroom, stronger school, and in turn, it's going to benefit our children when our teachers feel that extra support.
When you mentioned a lack of supplies in the classroom, what kind of things are you talking about?
So, there's been a few instances where I've had new teachers come to me and say they showed up to a classroom that was completely bare, absolutely nothing, no books, no extra supplies and they're having to scrounge up to get all of that. Now, teachers, it's very commonly known that teachers will spend their own money for their classrooms because they know how important it is, but that should not be the expectation. We do have amazing PTAs that try to provide grants and try to provide supplies and other, other organizations that also try to do that, but as a school, we need to ensure that these classrooms are fully supplied. We, as a parent, I, we constantly get those emails of, hey, we're needing more Kleenex at school, hey, we're needing more sanitizing wipes at school. We get those on a regular basis, still. Those, those are, are things that they may seem little and small, but feel like should be a, a kind of standard, we should have those, those for our classrooms.
Is that a concern you saw among the newer teachers or is that across all experienced ages or was there, did you get different feedback from different teachers based upon how long they have been teaching?
I've heard a lot of different feedback, right? Every teacher has a, has a different experience, just like every child has a different experience in the classroom. I can't generalize specifically one, one group to another, I just know based off of the few individuals that have come to me and reached out to me and, and shared that with me, that, you know, they, they have concerns about staying in the teaching profession and, and whether it's, it's the right place for them to be because they, they don't feel that they're supported.
That, again, one of the issues that you have touched on. Going back to what you had mentioned earlier about parents and teachers and kids suffering during the distance learning or out-of-class learning experience, it seems that there's been a learning loss during that time from when kids started coming back and then even then it wasn't fully in and, and kids had to wear masks and there's a question with younger classes as to learning pronunciations and, and wording your mouths and being able to see that correctly. What are some of the learning losses you've seen and, and what are some of the things that you as a school board member can promote to help bridge that gap? Because it's, it's, I mean, the, the state of the county report came out and it's, it doesn't look very good.
Yeah, that, the learning loss is a big concern. It was something that as parents, we brought up to the school board when all this distance learning was happening. We were, we saw our kids falling behind and we were very, very concerned about it. Now, being back in the classroom, that was something I did see firsthand, was the amount of learning loss and how much extra work was needed to go into helping these kids make up and we still have a ways to go. There's, we are not where we were pre-pandemic as far as our test scores go and, you know, they've made a lot of progress, but we aren't there yet. So, really what I've, what I felt like was missed, a missed opportunity in the last, in the last year since getting back into the, into the classroom was providing a county-wide tutoring program. That was, that was actually a suggestion that many of us made and when you have, when teachers can't do everything, they, they, when they have 15 to 30 kids in their class, depending on what grade they're teaching, they can't give all those kids individual, as individualized instruction as they need or that extra time as much as they needed. So, providing some type of county-wide tutoring program using those ESER funds that we received and we received millions of dollars in ESER funds. So there was a lot that could have been done there to help and working with community partners, I think a lot of people in our community really wanted to help our schools but didn't know how. You know, they wanted to help kids get back to where they were pre-pandemic and, and they didn't know how and so it was really a missed opportunity there to really help our kids make up.
Speaking about the funding, I think one of your points that you've made previously is that you'd like a better ability to make it transparent to parents and communities to see how those funds are used. What are some of the thoughts you're doing, thinking about as to making that kind of thing happen?
Yes, we absolutely need to be more transparent. Our, our board, our administrators need to be more transparent about where they are using those ESER funds. There was an initial survey sent out to the community about where would you like to see these funds and then we had a presentation at a board meeting that then described where they were going to use those funds in general terms, but we haven't since heard very specific instances of this is where it was used. I remember coming to a board meeting and saying, why aren't we using this to buy picnic tables for all the, all the schools so our kids can eat outside, so we can create outdoor learning spaces? Again, missed opportunity, you know, maybe they didn't want to go with that idea, but let's think outside of the box, you know, in, in using those funds. We need to have monthly reports that are clear to read, not, I mean, we can, you can go in and you can talk to the CFO at Chatham County Schools and, and get a report from him, but it needs to be readily, readily available and accessible and understandable to the, the wider community of where expenses are being made, what they're being spent on, how they're being used in our schools and it can just be an informational report that we, that we issue, you know, on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. But I think that, that is very important to have that transparency in, in where funds are being used.
That transitions us, or the beginning of, of one of your other issues, we talked about supporting teachers. The other issue you had as being important and for, was building trust between schools and families. You mentioned you want to have more transparency, curriculum, budget, policy decisions, and active involvement. Would you care to build on those?
Yeah, it's exactly what you read, building, building trust, well, trust has been lost. Many of us as parents really trusted blindly in the schools, you know, we had no reason to question. Then we, our children were doing well and unless we had an issue come up, we didn't, we didn't really question the schools. That trust has been lost with the decisions that were made over the past two years and it needs to be built back. You know, we had, we have a lot of things to overcome and when we feel ignored as parents, that's not helping to build that trust back. So, how do we build trust back? Yes, transparency, that's huge. Providing transparency in the policies that are being made, having discussion about those policies, making sure it's clearly understood why decisions are made at the board level. Also, providing transparency in, in reporting and in our funds and what's being used, materials in the classroom, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways that at the board level we can create that. We can also build trust by partnering with parents. So, that comes with creating a collaboration and really what needs to happen is a very open parent advisory committee. So there's been this, the, it's recently in the last couple of months come out that our, our school board and administration is having a parents committee or a superintendent is having a parents committee. However, it's with pre-selected individuals, so each school selects one individual to be on that parent committee. That's too selective and too exclusive. I think we need to be more inclusive of parents in our community, we need to have a wider committee so that all parents feel represented, not just the ones who, you know, consistently go to the PTA meetings, but we want to see everybody, we want to see everybody have that opportunity to be involved and be a part of the discussion. I've also made, made the point that, you know, it's not going to be event session, you know, if we have a committee, it's, we want to actively improve and, and make our schools better. So we've got to learn to compromise, we've got to learn to have open discussions with those that we might disagree with and we've got to be open to the idea that we aren't always going to have our way, we've got to compromise in this.
Going to that open discussions and this hits on your third point, parents and families, do you feel that there hasn't been enough open discussion, no open discussion and, and it seems, and that you're not the only parent that expresses this concern, is that parents' concerns are neglected and, and kind of ignored? Is that what you're seeing out there?
I've seen a lot of that in the last two years with the school board. That was something that shocked me when I went to the board meetings was the lack of discussion, just, it appeared that there was this rubber stamp of approval for everything and that's concerning because sometimes it may not, the discussion may not change the decision that's being made, but it provides background, it provides this wider view to the public of why this decision is being made. Having an open discussion in board meetings is not occurring and it needs to. You know, all the discussion about decisions should be made in that board meeting in a public setting, not behind closed doors. We don't know what's happening outside of those board meetings, but there's not, not open discussion in the board meetings.
Now, might the board argue that their 30 minutes of public input every meeting is sufficient?
That is a opportunity for someone to make a statement to the board, but there is not follow-up and there is not discussion afterward. If, if we want to have open discussion, it needs to be in the form of, okay, we have a parent committee, we meet with our teacher organizations, we meet with our student organizations, we hold open community sessions, that's also something I'd like to bring in, so that individuals in our community can have discussion with board members. You know, we can, we can send emails to the board, but we don't always get a response and if we do, sometimes it's just a rote response. So, how are we supposed to feel represented if we aren't able to have that, you know, interaction, that feedback with our board members? You know, those board members are elected by the community to represent the community and so I want to bring that parent, that parent perspective onto the board.
You mentioned, again, the troubles that the students have had, the parents interacting with the board. It's your last point of, of the issues that are important to you, you've got listed as an unbiased quality education. When you say that, what do you mean by that?
Well, our world around us, I think we could all agree, has become extremely divisive. The last couple of years have not helped that and our classrooms need to be free from political ideas being pushed, they need to be free from bias in that we're not trying In that we're not trying to override one individual's idea. We can show respect for all. We need to be teaching our kids, not what exactly they should be thinking, but we need to teach them. You know, how to think critically so that they can evaluate and make decisions for themselves and be able to evaluate. The world around them. It's really creating that classroom that's, you know, I talk about neutral, that doesn't mean that it's sterile or that we don't ever address. Hot topics or issues, but if those have to be addressed in the classroom because it's a part of the curriculum. Because we should be following the strict state guidelines in whatever is being taught. You know, all teachers and staff know that. They've, they've got to follow that strict curriculum. So if there are topics that need to be addressed, then. Then it's brought up in a very neutral manner in that students don't know the political affiliation of the teacher. Or the staff member or whoever it is that is leading the discussion. But then it can be an open. Open opportunity for them to discuss and learn together.
Speaking of hot topics, well, let's tackle this one. What is your stance on CRT or Critical Race Theory?
Yeah, so that is a very hot topic. That's a question that I and many others get asked quite often. CRT is a very divisive theory that. Seems to be cropping up in our schools. It was something strictly university level, but it now. Now seems to be diving into our K through twelve schools. And I don't believe it belongs there. I don't believe it's healing. For our community when one very specific viewpoint on racism is pushed in that way. I think, I think we do need to have discussions and address race, racism, but I don't believe that that is, is the way to do it.
What do you have to say to the board members that claim that there is no CRT training in the school system?
I would just request that you be transparent about what is being presented, what trainings are being presented. And again, that not just brushing things under the rug, but actually addressing and answering the community and the questions that they ask.
Let's talk a little bit about the future. Actually, schools are for the most part is about the future or schools are about the future. Linfast, electric car company out of Vietnam and Wolfspeed are both big companies coming here. Technology-driven companies coming here to Chatham County. What kind of things do you see a school board needing to do? What kind of things do you as a school board member see as needing to be done to be able to accommodate? What's coming here to Chatham County?
Yeah, absolutely. That, these businesses coming is going to bring. Many more children into our community. We're going to have a lot of growth. So we need to be aggressive in. Addressing, you know, our building needs, our facility needs. We need to be. Really seeking to expand our trade programs. And maybe working with the community college more. They provide so many opportunities there. And I think. Expanding that even more. We do have opportunities in our high schools to attend CCCC. So I'd like to see that expanded even more. These are great companies that we want our, our youth, if they want to go on to. You know, our call, our high school graduates, if they want to go on to work at those, let's provide them those skills. So that they can, or provide them those paths so they can see where they, where they can go after high school so they can, they can take that path.
Right, about thirty minutes into this discussion, we've got a couple more questions. We've hit on your big issues. Actually, an interesting question. What's your favorite thing about Chatham County?
Oh, I love the people of Chatham County. I have, ever since we moved here, we have felt just at home. And as I've been able to travel, you know, all sides of Chatham County, you know, we are a very large county. I have just been so impressed by how down to earth and open and kind. You know, the people in Chatham County are. I mean, I love it here and I don't want to leave.
What are some of your favorite experiences? Because you've been on the campaign, you announced your campaign a while ago. What are some of the best experiences or discussions that you've had being on the campaign trail? I have seen you when I've gone out covering sports at a lot of different events. So I know you're not just sitting at home. But you're out there interacting with the community.
Yeah, I, I love being able to go and compete. I attend my kids sporting events over at football games, soccer games. I have loved being able to sit down and hear people's concerns. I, I find that so often when someone's felt ignored, they just want somebody to sit and listen. To them. And so I've loved being able to listen to them and lend that ear to them. But also I've seen the hope. The hope that they see in me in running for this position. The hope that, hey, you know what, maybe we can have a change on the board. Maybe we, we can make a difference. Maybe my vote is going to make a difference in this. It's been so awesome to get to know. Individuals who've, you know, been born and raised here and lived here their entire life and they're going to the same school that their parents did, you know. And yet we also have individuals who this is their first time, you know, living in Chatham County, but they, they all love it. And they all have different experiences and different viewpoints, but they have something in common. They love Chatham County and they love this area.
I got to meet your sister this weekend at the Pittsburgh Street Fair. I'm not going to let this opportunity go by. She's seven years older than you and she claimed that you two never fought, but let me, let me go back a little bit in time. Since we're talking about schools, we're going to stay on the subject of the schools. What was your favorite school experience or memory from, from your school days?
Oh, my school days? Wow, okay. Let's see. I, so in high school. I grew up outside Seattle, so suburbs of Seattle, that's where I grew up. And when I was in high school, they offered what they called a teaching academy program. So when I was in senior, you could join teaching academy and it was. You know, you had two semesters in your year. The first semester you learned about being a teacher. It was kind of this intro to, to being a teacher. You learned about lesson plans. And then the second semester, you actually got to go into an elementary school classroom. And kind of volunteer during the day. And I loved that. I think that's when I first recognized, you know, I love being in the schools. I love being with kids. And I love seeing just the excitement that they have. For learning and, and for life and they're silly and they're funny and. And so that, that to me as a high schooler, being able to interact and be with kids in that way was so much fun. It was such a nice change from the normal high school, you know, day to day that you tend to have. But that was, that was probably one of my most memorable, memorable times.
So something you did in high school, is that something that's kind of driving your passion for what you're doing right now?
It definitely has an influence on it. I think all of our experiences can help lead us to where we are, right? We all have a different story and we're on a different journey. And I've definitely felt that push to be involved in schools. And, and yeah, I think it did start, you know, when I was back in high school.
All right, here's one. Favorite school teacher and why?
Oh, favorite school teacher. Oh, this is hard. Well, I'll, I'll say it was that teacher for Teaching Academy. I ended up being, I ended up having her for a couple of subjects and then being a teacher's assistant for her. And her name was Ms. Opree and she was just so enthusiastic. And she saw you as a person, not just a student. You know, she could tell when you had your bad days. She could tell when you needed that extra little boost. And, and she was just really inspiring, really inspiring individual. And I'm still friends with her today, thanks to Facebook.
It's, it's interesting how, shoot, I remember my second grade teacher. I think probably the reason I remember her is because her name was actually Mrs. Hamburg and not as a second grade, I thought that was funny. But your memories are better than my memories. But yeah, it's interesting how schools, your school teachers affect how your perspective on life and it seems to have affected you on that. We're getting close to wrapping up here. Let's toss out this question. What would you like to see accomplished? If you're elected a school board member in your first four years on the school board?
Yes, so what could be accomplished in four years? I think there's a lot that can be done. I think that providing that open parent advisory committee is super important. Making it more inclusive of all the parents and all the viewpoints in our community is number one important. Number two, I'd say is providing those, that transparency in our finances. Like I said, again, bringing up, making sure that it's readily available and accessible to our community, that they're easy to read. You know, reports of what's happening and where expenditures are. You know, this is a public school system funded by the taxpayers. So our schools need to be transparent about that. And what else? In four years, I really want to build that strong partnership and build that trust back. So that means we've got to be more open in our school board meetings. We've got to create more discussion in our community. So holding those, whether it's round tables or forums or kind of those community sessions where. The community, community can talk with and discuss their concerns with the school board is important. And creating some type of pattern for that, whether it's on a quarterly basis that we do that or twice a year, but having that consistent. Pattern of, of meaning, meaning with the community and meaning with parents.
Is there anything that else you would like to add or should I ask you any other question that I haven't asked you yet?
I think that our Board of Education race is the most important race right now happening in the election. Our school board has a deep impact on our children's future. And I strongly believe that all children need to have that opportunity to succeed. And be given those supports so that they can become a lifelong learner. So I just strongly encourage everyone to get out and vote, to please, please get out and vote. Now is the time, like you said, we've been campaigning for a long time and election day is almost here. So. Again, just encourage everybody to get out and vote.
Right, I'm going to toss out one last question. If you don't want to answer it, you don't have to. If you want to think about it for a few seconds, you can. When we started off this interview, I think your passion for what you're doing. And the concerns you express with other moms about what's happening to your kids came across. So my question is. As a parent, as a mom. What are your hopes and desires for your family and then for all the kids of Chatham County? Because I get the sense it's not just your kids that you're doing this for. If you don't want to answer the question, you don't have to. Want to think about it, that's fine.
Well, you're right. I'm, I'm not just doing this for my kids. I think the showing up to board meetings two years ago was for my kids, but it turned into so much more. It turned into hearing from other parents and wanting to advocate for them as well and be that voice for them. Not everybody has the confidence or the ability to do that. I strongly believe in. Parents, that parents are the best advocates for their kids, so they should be listened to. So what are my hopes and dreams? I, I want my kids and all the kids in Chatham County. To become lifelong learners. You know, whatever path they take, whether they go to university, whether they go to a trade school, whether they go right into work. After high school, I want to see them all have those opportunities to continue on and that desire to continue on and be. A contributing, you know, citizen in our county and in our communities and, and in our state. You know, whether they stay in Chatham County or not. I want to see our kids be happy and successful, you know, whatever that means to them. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of, that's, that's mainly, I mean, I could, I could go into specifics for my children, but it's. But think, but as a board member, you know, you, you would represent the entire community. You should be advocating for, you know, all the children in Chatham County. And I think that's a super important part of, of your role as a board member.
Jessica, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jean.